Thank you all for being here. And Ms. Tanner, could you call the floor for me, please?
Here.
President.
Jordan.
Barton.
Here.
Stone.
Here.
Here. Thank you. All right, we have agendas before us and we're gonna, I just want to say we have two things on the agenda regarding student success and the budget finance. Dr. Burzong and Dr. Poehl will lead us in a discussion about progress monitoring Goal Five, revisiting Goal Five interim goals. Then we'll go in a conversation about progress monitoring and if time permits, we will talk about some school board operating procedures. I have shared with the board, we're gonna allow an hour for item, Agenda Item Two and Agenda Item Three. We are here scheduled till 6:30, so give us some time to discuss. So, we're not gonna take up too much more time, I'm gonna hand it over to Dr. Burzong.
Good afternoon, everyone. As you all are aware, the administration has presented to you Goal Number Five along with the interim measures. So whatever the board's desire is in moving forward, we're prepared to discuss Goal Five and the interim measures once again. Dr. Poehl?
Thank you, Dr. Burzong. And as Dr. Burzong said, as presented in December and then discussed, I think, at the last board meeting, Goal Five and the interim measures.
School board members, you heard Dr. Poehl. Do you have any questions around, we did confirm Goal Five was what we, well, two weeks ago, we decided that we were good with Goal Five, and so the interim goals that we have here that are aligned with Goal Five. So I'm gonna open the floor up for any questions.
If you, if you would, could you just walk us through, just walk us through it again, so we have a understanding of it?
Sure, Ms. Jordan. So, Goal Five was agreed upon to be the percentage of NPS graduates, graduates receiving advanced studies diplomas will meet or exceed the state average by the end of the S Y 2627, or the class of 2027. Currently, the NPS average is 35.3 for advanced studies diplomas, and the state average is 51.5. So the goal setting for the five-year, or for the, sorry, the trend data for the five years was listed on the slide, just as an additional data piece from 1819 where NPS was at 36.6, and you can see that, you know, a little bit of a climb and a little bit of a decline, and we're following just about the state's line average, it's just we're below their average. So then the targets were set, keeping the state average, you know, the same through the period, because we just can't really estimate where that will be, but setting our targets to move up towards the state average. And then the, to track this, looking at specific cohort data. So the 2027 cohort would be our current ninth grade class. Yep, I just wanted to do that math one more time in my head, but it's our current ninth grade class. So you'd see, for quarter one data, there were 44.8% of the students that were currently on track. Our target would be for 50%. In doing further calculation, right now, I believe we have just over 90% of our ninth grade class or cohort 2027 who are enrolled in courses, if, as long as they're passing all of them, that would be on track for an advanced studies diploma. As we discussed when this was presented, one of the largest barriers is language for our students when they get into their sophomore year, not taking a world language. And then we looked at cohort 2026, which is our current 10th grade class, and in quarter one, 27.7% were on track, according to our data, and we want to get that to 40% by the end of the year, which is possible, because when looking at it, if, if every student was successful right now, I believe we were, and I don't have the data point right in front, but around 50% of our students would, could be on track for advanced studies that are in the correct courses for that. And then our last one was cohort 2025, and the reason that was our last is because this year's cohort 2024, they're already, there's nothing much more we can do to get them in another class. And you'll see that there currently, there's 25.3% with a final target of 34%, which, again, is doable with the success rate of passing all the classes. And then under each table, we listed what courses would they have to be enrolled in and passing in order to achieve the advanced studies diploma.
Thank you for that review, Dr. Poehl. Is there any questions? Ms. Basine?
Thank you, Dr. Poehl, for allowing an opportunity for us to review this again, and I'll have a shared understanding of, of the goal and the interim, the interim measures. I have one question regarding the interim measures. So, I understand, and I can appreciate, you know, looking at the cohorts, each of the cohorts to make sure that, you know, whether they're on track or not on track. But when I look at, like, when I was looking at last year's advanced diploma data and looking at, looking at it by school and by demographics, you know, you see some distinct differences across schools, as you know. And, so I was wondering if looking at the cohorts overall correlate best with us reaching that goal, or whether or not we reached that goal, or if we should be looking at specific schools or specific demographics to, you know, particularly our African-American students, and how they're accessing the advanced diploma track, you know?
So I can assure you, Ms. Basine, that we break that data down internally by school and by demographics, and focus on that when students are enrolling or anything. My understanding with, with the school board goals is that the goal is the overarching division. So, you know, when we're reporting out, we're reporting out the overarching division. I, I believe it was Mr. Jordan who said, really focusing on the data that's the data, which, which relates right to the goal. So if, you know, if the board's decision is to want to dig deeper and have more data, we're happy to report more data, but I don't want to inundate you with data that's not needed. So, but we, I assure you that we are looking by school and by demographic to know, you know, specifically where, where do we need to see growth the most in order to achieve the board's goal over the five-year period?
I was, and I appreciate that. I was hoping we could have maybe some board discussion around whether, if...
We can.
...there's any response to what I just shared, or...
Yeah, I was raising my hand for the same reason.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, we can open up if you have any questions.
Well, if I may?
Yes, you may.
So, you know, I guess my thought is, and going back to Dr. Poehl's point, is not so much about more data, but if it's the, the right data for us to be able to monitor progress. So, I had a similar question, because as we look at the, you know, in the footnote, it's identified that, you know, all the different courses that have to be calculated in order to track the, the progress. But my question, similar to Ms. Basine's, would be whether or not, you know, I don't know if it's geometry, you know, if there's some course or courses that we know are the, showing up as the biggest barriers, the gateway, whichever way you want to look at it, should we then really be looking at as part of the interims, having one that gives us focus as to how children are enrolling in a particular class, and also, more importantly, how they are performing? And so, if we knew that, I mean, you all are experts on this, but let's say if we knew that geometry, for example, was one of the courses that was limiting our students achieving advanced diplomas, then a interim could focus on, you know, the percentage of students that are successfully passing geometry, and, you know, in a smart way, and then that's something we could then hone in on that would let us know, would be one indicator of whether or not they're likely to achieve an advanced diploma versus rolling, rolling it all up. And that was kind of what, what my thought was.
And that, that was actually what I was trying to get at. Like, so you mentioned language, you know, language being a big barrier, you know, so if that is a big barrier, we know that based on the data that you've reviewed, and if there are limitations, for instance, like when you look at school-by-school data, you know, Lake Taylor and Booker T., Washington have lower advanced percentage of students who are earning advanced diplomas, and if the world language is a barrier, then, you know, from an equity standpoint, how do we ensure that that barrier is removed? And, you know, so...
And I, I want to be cautious. The, the barrier is not necessarily with course offering here, the barrier is with course selection. So, one of the things that we're working on now, as we're entering course selection for the next year, is the high levels of encouragement for students to take that world language as a sophomore, because that's our first gateway, really, is the, is the world language course. If they don't take that by a sophomore year, getting three years is near impossible unless they can do a summer course in it, which would have to be through Virtual Virginia or somewhere else, and, and, and that's just more difficult to do. So, so that sophomore year is the barrier, and then Mr. Jordan, to your comment, you know, when we get to the, the senior year, sometimes that fourth science, or the, the fourth math course, where the students are just like, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm career-oriented, and I know where I want to go, and what I want to do in the advanced studies, I don't, I don't need it. Or students at that point, who, you know, some of our, our student athletes who know they're gonna go and play, and they don't need that course to get into college for the advanced studies, they may just say, I'd rather not put it on my plate senior year. So, so those are the conversations we need to have, and that, you know, the difference with the advanced studies diploma, sometimes it's not a, it's not a gatekeeper to college or university level, it's, it's, you know, just a, a higher level of study at their high school level.
And another conversation that we need to have is with our parents. Our parents definitely have to be engaged in these conversations, because changing the mindsets of teenagers often, when they are just ready to go to college, and they feel like they've already been accepted, and there's really no motivation to take that higher-level science class, then sometimes it just takes good old mama to say, you will enroll in this class, and you will be successful. So I think this is another opportunity for our parents to be really engaged in the whole process, and to know about, you know, where their children are and where they want them to be, their own goals for their children, and how their children can get there.
Dr. Gabriel?
Thank you. So, two comments. I appreciate how you mentioned that while we will strive for the academic diploma, academic diploma does not necessarily mean that if you don't graduate with one, you will not be successful, because we know that through all of the career and technical education that has been really pushed and well-supported in the division, those students are going to be destined for success after NPS with multiple certifications, one of them may not be an advanced diploma, but they will be certified and will be ready for the world of work. And so, when I look at the goal for, it's on the computer, when I look at the goal, I see the goal as resting with the board, and the measures as resting with the superintendent. And then when, when you great, illustrated the dip that we had, and you compared it to the state dip, I think that's when it's appropriate for your team to go back and say, why did we have that dip? Is it geometry? Is it the foreign language? And then you come back to us and say, okay, because I may not be the one to know that geometry is it, and I may not be the one, as a board member, to know that the language is it, but you all should be on that right away. You should be able to pinpoint that area through the data. And I would, I would expect that when you come back and present to us, that you would say, this is where we pinpointed the dip, and these are the interventions that we're making. We're making these courses more readily available, we're having tutoring, we're gonna talk with our parents about the foreign language, et cetera, et cetera. But for me, I want us to focus on the overarching goal, and I want to leave you all with the interim measures.
Mr. Clanton?
Thank you, Ms. Buffalo. And I totally agree with a lot of things that have been said here, and we're not gonna, what I'm about to say is not, definitely not a direction of changing anything here. But as the board continues with this conversation, I like us really, I've often talked about, you know, the career, being ready for college is one thing, and I think this is what the advanced studies kind of sets it up for, though it can be for other things. But the career and technical component, being ready for career, life, military service, even the entrepreneurship piece is another big thing out there now. I was literally at a conference, and they were talking about, there's two new jobs that are out there. You've heard me talk about it. But there's a AI consultant?
Yeah.
AI engineer. Totally, you know, we wouldn't have thought about it a couple of years ago. But I think that at a board level, when we kind of look at tracking all those things down there, sends the right message from the board, that it isn't just about going to college, though I believe that, you know, there's lifelong learning, and there's many roads to that. But we want truly to send the message that we want our students to be successful, tracking those who are on top of them. And you've heard me say this before, I don't want one student to be what I consider gen pop, that some kid who's just going through the motions through high school and has no clear direction where they're going. If we are strategic, and leaving it up to you, but the board setting up a, a goal, says that we want every child, that student, when they get to high school, to have a clear direction and a pathway where they're gonna go, I think that it sends everything else that we do. Our funding, where we put resources, teachers, structure, all those things, are strategic on that and focused on that, we'll see a lot of great results coming out of it, kids graduating on time, attendance issues, disciplinary issues, because kids want to be here. You know, my, my nephew graduated last year, engaged. My nephew graduated last year, and oftentimes I would gauge what was going on in school, sometimes from what they would say to me. And he was just like, you know, Uncle Seem, you know, some of these kids don't want to be here. He knew he wanted to be there, because if not, Uncle Seem was gonna show up. But, at the end of the day, it's how do we really engage and reach a demographic of students for them to see? It's, it's not the old day, it's not when any of us were in school, it's a show-me right now. And, and kids need to see that, where they're gonna go, and I think if we, at a board level, kind of take this to another level on this goal, I know that we were trying to get there, I think this is a great start, but I think there's some other components to this goal that needs to be placed there, and that's the only thing I'm saying. It's not gonna happen today, but I'd like to definitely see us to continue that conversation moving forward.
I just wanted, so I think that the conversation that we're having is the challenge conversation that we always have. So, the, you know, we have, you know, five goals, four of them are student outcome-focused, and one is kind of a, you know, the accreditation is kind of on the end of results, it's not really student outcome-focused in that, when we say student outcomes, and we'll talk about that some more in a minute, we, we mean, you know, what students know and are able to do. So, we've identified five priorities or five goals for the board to monitor. So, these goals are really supposed to be a consideration of, as we've considered what we've heard from the community that we represent, and as we've examined the, the data that's been presented to us, you know, what's high needs and high leverage. And so if you recall, we, the administration has presented us all kinds of data that was pointing out our folk, our, where our students are in terms of, of literacy. And so we have a goal that, really a couple of goals that deal with literacy. And then we also looked at goals and data as relates to math performance and subgroup gaps. So we had a goal that we came up with on, at least looking at early, early to middle school, three through eight gaps there, and again, with a focus on literacy and math. And then when we were having this conversation around this fifth goal, we started out around, you know, college and career readiness, and we got stuck, I think, because it looked like we were, the way the formula was driving, it was more geared around what students were enrolling in, not what students were knowing. So additionally, as we received the equity report and some of the other things that we looked at, the, my understanding is that the conversation grew around the advanced studies diploma, was not so much to say whether college is good or career is bad, because ultimately, we know we have a larger strategic goal outside of these board goals that intends for every student to be college and career-ready, and we know that the accreditation system and all the systems that we have in the strategic plan are touching on that. So, it's not that this advanced studies diploma goal, as we've agreed to it, really is saying anything other than trying to make sure that our students on the, on the, what they know and are able to do, that they are learning and mastering content that puts them into, in a position to successfully earn an advanced study diploma. So it's still really trying to center around what students know and are able to do. We also have some non-negotiables that we can, that we'll talk about at some point, but everything isn't gonna end up in a goal, and just because it doesn't end up in a goal doesn't mean it's not important. And so, my other comment is, to, to Dr. Gabriel's comment, the interims, while they are defined by the administration, we really want interims that are, that are able to show the board that there's some, that progress on the interims will lead to achievement of the goal, and that, that the goal is something that's influenceable by the superintendent. So, for example, to what extent the superintendent can influence what parents do, I don't know. But what we know, what the superintendent administration can do, kind of what Dr. Poehl was talking about, is, on one side, making sure that students are prepared for the advanced classes, are enrolling in the advanced classes, then obviously, with teaching and learning that's happening, successfully completing the classes. And so I think the, the piece, what we need to get a good feel for with the interim from a board's perspective, is if you look at the interims, if you, if we were to, if the targets are being met and we are monitoring those targets, will they eventually get us to the goal? And so, you know, I'm still of the mind, I think what's there is fine, but I think what's missing is hearing from the, you know, having the administration perhaps come back to us and say, maybe that there is, whether it's world language, or whether it is geometry, or something that we're measuring in terms of the student knowledge component as we, as we monitor. We don't set it, but it at least gives us an indication as to whether or not there's a high leverage or high need course that our students need to be successfully completing, so that, as you know, we talk about that one-to-five-page report, there's a whole piece in there around where the superintendent can talk to us about strategies, and I think that's where we're having this conversation around. If we see that A is not leading to B, then in the report, they'll let us know, these are the strategies that we are doing, and that's where that real conversation comes in. But it all starts with us having a goal, and the interims, being able to set up that, that conversation.
Okay. Ms. Stone?
Yep. What I think I hear everyone saying is that the data that we have here is good, it's a good starting point, it gives us something, and more is not necessarily needed on a regular basis, that the, the measures that we have here are achieving with the goal, at least what Goal Five is doing here. And then the extra piece would just be, we're recognizing within other pieces of the data that this is what's causing the drop, and just giving us that action piece from the background, just for our own understanding as the board on what the moves are, especially as we consider budgetary concerns and things that we have to work, policies that we need to change to help support those interim pieces. That's what I think I hear everyone saying, is that the, the data that we have here for Goal Five is good, there are extra pieces that are definitely helpful, and as you identify them, you can, the, the administration can bring that back and say, these are things we noted are, were the major issues, these are the action pieces that we're taking, just so that we know, but the piece that we really need is the data that we have before us. And so my suggestion would just be that, that the data itself stays the same, we're just getting that extra piece. I, I'm trying to remember which of the many PowerPoints I've now seen it was, but there, there was like the, the piece at the end that said, here are the things we noted and that we're working on that were affecting this data, just so you know what the background is. We didn't need like all of the information, but enough to tell us that the, the needle's moving in the right direction, or what, what the action pieces are on the, on the administration's side. The second comment and/or suggestion that I have is, I know I mentioned at our last meeting that my, the difficulty that I have in conceptualizing our goals and what we're doing with them is just that thematic piece, and what I'm hearing from our conversations is that we essentially have three themes happening here that we're caring about. Accreditation and performance, that's Goal One and Goal Four, literacy, which is Goal Two and Goal Three, and then college and maybe career readiness, which is Goal Five. And maybe when we get into the board's discussion about our next steps, maybe we add a Goal Six, so that we have two goals under each of those themes. So we have three main themes, and maybe if we think about them in that way, that will help us focus our conversations a little bit more, because it sounds like we're all on the same page that accreditation, performance, literacy, and college and career readiness is, is really what our focuses are gonna be and what our messaging should be. And so if we put those, in those themed areas, and maybe structure these goals, and what they say, that those are the things that are focusing on, and these goals are supporting those things, it might make it a little bit easier for us to have these conversations.
I would, you know, the, the recommendation is usually that we have three to five, and so, and that's how we, you know, we start off with this long list, and we pare it down, we pare it down, we pare it down. I do agree, like I said, of the, of the five that we have, we, and they're not ordered in terms of priority, they're just ordered. So the, the accreditation goal that we have is, is not really a student outcome goal, right? It's really about what adults do. So, we, if we decide to do anything additional, how we monitor that, that first one may be very different than any, any additional ones, if we decide to put an additional, an additional goal.
Sure. And I'm not suggesting that we add one right now, that would be silly to do at this point in the school year. I'm just saying that the, if we think about it, because I, I'm hearing the same things come up over and over, and it might help us focus our conversations, and help us think about those goals in what our, our overarching idea is. We care about literacy, we care about performance, we care about...
College and career.
College and our career, and we'll get to the career piece as we, as we work through this, but it, it might help us to think about it and to structure this in that way. And, and that way, it just focuses conversations like we said we would like to be able to do, and... I lost complete track of that sentence, I apologize. Just help us focus in all of those conversations, so we're being very clear about what those are, and, and wrap ourselves around how that works, and then be able to think about it that way. And I'm not suggesting that we change them, it's working with those goals, and also leaves room to talk further when we think about next year and how we want to continue.
Part of, Ms. Buffalo, if, since we're just, we're just having a conversation now, part of what we've, what we've heard and continue to hear is, so as we were looking at data and having conversations around the, the goals, often what we would hear from the community that we represent, that it seemed like we were skewing our focus to students who had certain challenges, but we aren't, we weren't giving enough focus to students who may be in the middle that need to be pushed, or people who... in the middle that need to be pushed, or people who, or students who are already at a certain point and need to be pushed further. And I think this advanced studies goal also was centered around trying to be responsive to what the community was saying, it, you know, the goals and what they valued. And so with the advanced studies, it allows for everybody kind of fall in the box, if you will, and making sure that we are doing the things that are necessary to make sure that wherever our students are, that all of them are progressing towards what the advanced studies requires. The other thing I would throw out for the board, and also for Dr. Burson and Dr. Poe, as I was looking at this again, with the focus on closing the gap between the MPS average and the state, so we know that right now, at least from last year's data, the state was at that 51.5. And Dr. Poe, I think you mentioned earlier that we are, we kind of keep that consistent, while at the same time, by the time we get to the end of the cycle, if the state average went up, then we would really be examining our end of the cycle performance against the state's beginning of the cycle performance. What, what's the downside of, of looking at the, almost like we did with, maybe it was the, the achievement gap, that if the 51.5 was the floor, but if the state average went up, that annually, we would still be looking at our end of the year result against their end of the year result, and then whatever adjustments or strategies that the administration wanted to bring back to, that would eventually close the gap, so in school year 26, 27, whatever the state average is, and our performance is, is zero, as long as the, as long as the, you know, the state average isn't falling. You know, ours should continue to go up, and if theirs goes up, the gap should still continue to narrow. Is there some value for us not having the static 51.5, but actually putting actual in, and, and that would then inform what additional work or strategies we would need to do to continue the gaps to, to close?
So if you recall, my viewpoint from about a year and a half ago, we presented the strategic plan, and it was a massive amount of data, I know, and some big charts, I realize that, I love my charts, but.
Your charts are good.
But if you recall, I'm a proponent of the gap and that plus or minus percentage around the gap. So I'm a proponent of looking at our current gap and saying, we just want to tighten that gap. So if the state goes up 5%, maybe we go up 5.5%. You know what, so we start just closing that gap, and if the state goes down, you know, like you said, we still want to go up, because we want to close that gap. But I'm more of a proponent of looking at the gap and the nature of the gap, instead of trying to, because we can't guesstimate where the state's going to be, which is why we left at 51.5 level, we just can't guesstimate where they're going to be, but we can certainly set our goal to grow, which closes the gap. But like you were saying, Mr. Jordan, at this point, if the state goes up, you know, 10%, and we're not going up that much, then our goals, then we're not really closing the gap at that point. I'm more a fan of a plus or minus around the gap, rather than setting specific data points like we did on this goal.
And the plus or minus, what you're describing as a plus or minus, be a interim? Can you write the, if, if pluses, if plus or minus matters, and it still impacts the closing of the gap, what's to prevent you all from coming back and using your plus or minus concept as something that we would monitor, but monitor it as an interim goal towards the overarching goal?
So we could do it on an annual basis.
Okay.
Because we couldn't do it quarterly, because we don't know the state's average quarterly, because that's not reported until, I think, October, as we find out the official state average. But we're, the way we're recording this on an interim basis is based on success and enrollment in courses. So at the beginning of the year, it's really, did we get the students enrolled in the courses that, that they need to be in, in order to even get an advanced studies? Then throughout the year, is what's our success rate on the students passing the courses they need in order to earn that credit by the end of the year and to stay on track? So the plus minus annually, we could do, Mr. Jordan, when we report out in the fall on it, but to get to the final goal of, of being at the state average. And that's where that plus minus would come in, i- in, in my viewpoint. But during the year, it's really about, we, we're going to have to goal set like we did, and, and, and push to make those goals that are reasonable as well, you know, to, to make, to make the progress we want to make as a division for our students and our community.
Mr. Jordan, does that mean I didn't do a good job with my lesson on plus or minus 10 when we were.
No, it just, no, it just means that it's, I can't speak, I can only speak for myself, I just think it's, I think you did a very good job on the lesson. It's hard to translate into, into this piece.
Sure.
Very much so.
But you can't fit it, fit that in an interim box.
Right, yeah. But is there, is there, I guess, Dr. Burson, Dr. Poe, is there, is there some agreement around perhaps bringing back an interim that targets, you know, some, some course or some gateway courses on the, not on the enrollment side, on the performance?
I, I, I think with the conversation, it's given me a, a better mindset of our interim reports.
Okay.
So I don't think it comes in with a goal setting, but it's with the interim reports. So you know, a couple of years ago, when I, with the presentations, I started with those end of the slides, like Ms. Stone said, where, you know, what is the data telling us, and, you know, what are the implications, and what are our next steps? Same kind of a thing with the report format that we've, we've created now, that we've started, and I know we're still perfecting, but I think specifically with this one, one of the things that we did start looking at when we looked at this data is, okay, what is the enrollment? And that's how I knew the numbers off my head, as far as our enrollment part, you know, I knew like 91% of our freshmen, our, our ninth graders are enrolled in the right classes, but we also know traditionally, which is a strategic plan goal, our failure rate in the ninth grade is the highest of all grade levels. So what courses specifically are causing that, that go into the advanced studies diploma, and how can you report on that to the board, and tell you what we're doing specifically for that? That's the feeling I'm getting from this conversation, that I think will help close that, kind of the gap we have within the interim, and what you're really looking for as a board. So we'll make sure when we do the reporting on this, that we give the depth of knowledge of, for our ninth graders, you know, it's, it's the passing of Algebra I, and it's the, you know, passing of English IX right now, maybe. For our 10th graders, it's, you know, 40% didn't enroll in a language, and of the 60% that did enroll in a language, maybe only 30% are passing, and I'm just making these numbers up to the community and everybody else who's watching, but we can report to that kind of a depth, to give us a feeling then, then we can also share with next steps of what we're doing currently with course enrollment, currently with tutoring, and currently with professional development of staff, to make sure that we're, we're honing in on those areas, because that's how we make success to the goal, right? And that's what we're doing anyway with the data, but we can report it that way in our, in our quarterlies.
Like that, too.
Fair enough.
Good conversation. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Poe.
My pleasure.
For next, we're going to kind of touch on, stay here and kind of touch on, I want to have some discussion around the monitoring calendar.
Yeah. You.
Yeah.
So almost piggybacking off of where we just left off, so we left off with Goal Five, and, and we received some interims. So one of the things that I, that I think I heard Dr. Poe reference was, when's the best time of the year to have information that, for example, would allow us to effectively monitor Goal Five? So in the, in the monitoring calendar, what we're attempting to do is, twice a month, be able to get a progress monitoring report on our goals.
Twice a month.
We should be, we should, we should be doing a, a monitoring report, hopefully at every meeting, right, and no more than two. So what you have is a draft start that I put together to try to align what, what we had set out in a potential monitoring calendar, that I built off of the monitoring calendar that Dr. Poe did. All I did was, in the, in the first column, you, we've, we've arrived at five goals, so I listed out the goals. Then I took where Dr. Poe had indicated where the data may be available, and assigned that to a month, trying to get some type of cadence with it. And so we know we have student outcome goals that we'll be monitoring, and non-negotiables that we'll be monitoring, and then the, the measures come, or they come straight from the interim goals. So, so each month, the board would know ahead of time, really all the way from February of 2024 through June of 2027, what we would be monitoring, it'd be, the calendar should last as long as the, the goals last. And then each month, we would know well ahead of time what, what to expect. So I just attempted, because the administration also needs to look at it, see if it makes sense, to lay out what we, what our schedule might be from today through, through August. What I was guessing at was, like we were, just had the conversation around Goal Five and, and advanced diploma, at the time, we didn't know what the interim goals may be. So it just shows up, if we have typically two meetings in a month, then the top box is the work session, the second box is the business meeting, probably at a workshop in, in some cases. Then when we have, like if you look at March, the conversation was, we may have a board retreat. So if there's three meetings, then it's potential that we could do three monitoring reports in a month. So ultimately, by the way, happy School Board Appreciation Month. And so what we're trying to do is say that, you know, excellence in the classroom begins with excellence in the boardroom. So we are monitoring the progress of our, of our students. So that's where this commitment comes in, where you look at our board norms, where we said our goal was to try to spend at least 50% of our time focused on how our students are doing, and less time on adults and all the other stuff that we talk about that have little to do with student outcomes. So in any event, the intent, so let's say if we went to March, so the advanced diploma, we just had a conversation, if the administration came back in March with any adjustments, then that's something that, that's why that's there in, in March. I don't think we're ready to do any monitoring of it, but at least I was trying to note the fact that it was possible coming out of this meeting, that there may be some adjustments, and we didn't want to lose track of that. We already know we're on a sequence around third grade reading, a Goal Two and Goal Three, so that's listed. On the non-negotiables, part of what we are, we adopted the non-negotiables, but we haven't really gotten the, the interims yet around the non-negotiables, so we need to close that loop. And, and then if you go into April, both of those around Goal Four, because the Goal Four has a big block around reading and a big block around math, and before, we were kind of monitoring it, at least from my perspective, it was hard trying to separate the reading and the math. So this still does the reading and the math, it just breaks them out, where one, we're focused on the reading, and one, we're focused on the, on the math. And so this is just a starter, and then when we get into June, we knew we were talking about, you know, receiving preliminary results. So again, rather than the, the format where we were getting all this strategic plan data, it was to get the strategic plan data, and that's not a negative, it was, we get the strategic plan data, but it should flow into the goals. And then if we do mid-year retreat, a, a summer retreat and a mid-year retreat, or other times, let's say on a quarterly basis, that the administration wanted to bring us a larger review of how we're progressing with the strategic plan, that can still be done, but it doesn't become a competitive environment. We stay focused on what we've prioritized, and from time to time, we can still see those other things that, that we know that the division is working on, that's important. So the, the task here is to determine whether or not the sequencing makes sense, that we're going to commit ourselves to that, because if you look at right now, we spend about, at least on paper, let's say we spend, so the business meeting, we start at four, and let's say we might end at nine, so that's five hours. At a work session right now.
Mr. Jordan, that, that's not my goal.
Oh, no, no, I'm just, I'm just talking about the way things are right now, right? The, the point is, if every month, I'll do it in numbers I can handle in my head, if every month, we, we met for eight hours total, then four of our hours should be spent on the board focusing on student outcomes. Right now, if you were to look at our meetings, we're not structured that way. If it takes about 45 minutes to do a progress monitoring report, then if we have a work session, and then, then we have to be able to shape our agenda, so that if we were to do two reports, 90 minutes. So we prioritize the, the monitoring for the 90 minutes, if there's another, whatever hour left, whatever other things need to be done, we can do that. But right now, at the business meeting, where we have longer meetings, you know, we'll start at four, we'll do closed session, outside of the, none of, none of the, none of the closed session deals with student outcomes. Now, we do do a student services report, but it's not really about what students know and can do. Spend a lot of time on personnel, we spend a lot of time on other things. We then come into the business meeting, we, we get the reports, we do a monthly financial report, nothing in the business meeting is student outcome focused. So we would need to adjust our practices and behavior, so that as a board, we would spend, especially if we kind of keep that business meeting format, that we spend less time dealing with adult stuff, and more time dealing with student outcomes, and that's what this monitoring calendar is trying to get us at every single meeting, that we are at least spending time on our board goals, and how we're progressing on those goals, and hearing from the administration how we're doing, and how the strategies are working. Because if we get that cadence and behavior down, then imagine this time next year, during the budget time, we would have, we would know all along the way, this is what we're doing, this is how we're doing, we would be hearing about strategies, the administration may be telling us about needs, and so all of this, resources, performance, evaluation, all that stuff is taking place every single month, because we're now focused on student outcomes as we say we want it to be. So I just wanted to let you know what's in front of you, but it, we really need to get some sense from the board, is there a commitment to this, and then allow the, the administration to come back and really map this out with their better understanding of when data is available, and all the internal machinations that they have to do in order to provide us the reports based upon that sequencing.
All right, with that said, do I have any questions? We've got about 10 minutes for this section. Ms. Basin?
I don't, I don't have any questions, but I do want to express my support for establishing this monitoring calendar. establishing this monitoring calendar and having it. I think it's, it's great. Um, it gives us an outlook as to what we're going to be covering and when, and, um, really keeps us focused in on topics. So, um, I, I just wanted to express my support for it.
Anyone, Dr. Gabriel?
Thank you. Um, so Mr. Jordan, you, when you did the monitoring calendar, you base it off of this. Perfect, okay. I, I, I like a good roadmap. I like being able for us and the administration to know ahead of time what the expectations are, if it's possible to plan months and months and months and months in advance, and it simplifies, um, any type of, uh, uh, last minute request, then, and if this keeps us focused and structured, then the additional layers, I think it, it, it just kind of outlines things just a little bit differently, but I can definitely, um, I, I, I'm fine with this, as long as Dr. Birdsong and her team are able to put in what those items are, which you had mentioned.
Yeah, it's, it's just taking what, um, like on that summer sheet, so every, every goal has interims, it should be no more than three, but every goal has interims. The non-negotiables will have some interims. Literally just mapping goal one, interim two, goal to make sure that we've covered throughout the year. And then in the, as we're doing this new, especially around the non-negotiables, we may do more than what we would typically do, because at some point, the non-negotiables might be twice a year, once a year. Oftentimes, we just go on the consent agenda, we receive a report, we review it, it goes on the consent agenda. But since we're, you know, getting started with it, then, you know, may want to take our time, make sure we have a good understanding, excuse me, of, um, of how we're progressing and getting that cadence down.
Thank you. I've about seven minutes and I, I want to stay on, stay within our time, but briefly, um, the non-negotiables, Norfolk Public Schools, um, board goals and non-negotiable summary. Ms. Tanner, if you can pull that up quickly, how much time we're going to have to discuss around this.
Just the same thing.
Yes, the same thing.
What we, what we don't have is, um, again, I was just trying to, ultimately, the administration has the skills to put it all on one page. Um, but this was just an attempt for the board to see each of the goals, um, what we were, what the measures were and what the interim goals are. We need to still come back and get the, uh, recommendations or have further discussion around the non-negotiable interim, interims.
Dr. Birdsong?
Yeah, just before we move on to this, I want to go back to the monitoring calendar just to make sure we're, we're all on the same page. So the moni, the monitoring calendar that was, uh, developed by the administration, um, so we, we just need to have a clear understanding of, of why we were being asked to pivot at this point in the, in the school year. Was there something that, um, that the board, uh, preferred in, in terms of, I, I don't, I don't know. It just, it just seemed to kind of, kind of come out of the blue. This was something that we've worked on for a while, it was, um, shared with the board, and certainly we are definitely flexible and we'll do whatever the board needs us to do, so you can do your work. Um, just, we want to have a better understanding so that we're all on the pa, on the same page and, and working together towards the same goals. It just seems like every time we feel like we're making a little progress, then we're being asked to do something differently or, or, or something else. And again, we're, we're in agreement with doing that, we just need to have a better understanding of the monitoring calendar that we previously presented. Was there something that the board didn't agree with, with the calendar? Um, just, we want a, a better understanding of that.
Ms. Buffalo?
Yeah, well, this calendar, uh, again, has all the goals and things inserted in, in it, but it, it's, it's more broader as we, um, incorporated the non-negotiables, which were not in the, the previous monitoring calendar. The measures are there, the evaluation piece is there, and then some other things that have been incorporated in this chart. So it's just, it's a more, um, comprehensive chart, if you will, of the board's work and how we're going to monitor our work as a school board, uh, around our goals and student outcome goals. So it's just pretty much expanded on what was previously, um, done. Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, cause just, so ultimately, the, the monitoring is, is, is the board's work. And, um, I think we were just trying to work through, I don't have, can you, Dr. Birdsong, can you share, for example?
And we were asked to put one together, that's why.
Why?
We were asked to put one together, which is why we did that, took the time to-
Right.
-put one together.
So, so the only thing that's, that's different, and it's like on, on the one that, that you all provided, it showed, it's something very similar. So for February, it had goal one, and then it showed the measure, chronic absenteeism, and then dropout rate. On, on this calendar, uh, it would still show goal one is accreditation, if you look in the second box. It also still contains what you had as chronic absenteeism dropout rate, but then it's also specific to what the particular interim goal is that we're going to be giving attention to for that particular progress monitoring report. So everything that you have in here is still in there, it's just that now that we have the, the interims, rather than, you know, like I was saying earlier, we may not have time to do all the interims in one report. So it just breaks out, um, throughout the calendar, which interim goal we would focus on at any given point in time. So I still tried to follow everything that you had, but for the board's purpose and for the larger understanding moving forward, we would know within the measure, what is it that we're particularly going to be focused on? And that's, that's what that is.
Ms. Buffalo, I know we're probably at time, um, but I just wanted to say, I like this, um, I like the transparency of it, um, the comprehensiveness of it, um, and as a board member, that we can track all the things that are responsible and due to us at a, any given point in time. So, I mean, and I appreciate what the administration did, I think that's a great basis. I think we just added some additional things that hold us accountable as a board and to stay focused.
And Mr. Clanton, you know, um, this roadmap is, is good because if this board changes and potentially change this year, three, three new board members, there's a roadmap here of the work that we've been doing and they can just continue to pick up and, and move on, right? So, um, yeah, so time now is-
Can I ask just a real quick clarifying question? I just want to make sure I understand. So is the expectation right now that next week, we're presenting on accreditation data? I just want to be clear on this, because it, the way this breaks it out, it looks like interim goals 1.1 and 1.2, we need to be prepared to report out next week.
That was the, I can't, I don't know what-
Chronic absenteeism. Well, originally it was for February, originally it was going to be for tonight, and it was, it was pushed back, but I, I don't, I don't want to upload a report if it's not going to be there. I, I just, I just need some clarity, I guess, on that.
You all worked on the agendas, I don't know.
I think if, if the board's consensus is to adopt this calendar, we have the administration look at it and make sure it meshes with, with what this is. And you stick with this until we get the feedback back from the administration.
Okay.
I don't want you got-
Well, the, the issue is, I'm, I'm comfortable, I think Dr. Paul is on point. So the bottom line is, they were prepared to present to us today. Whatever, whatever, for whatever reason, we're not doing that today. So, um, is there time allotted on the agenda for next week for them to present, yes or no? And if not, when would they be able to present? And is that, you know, there's conversation about a retreat, but my, my feedback would be if there's, if there's a way for them to share it next week, that we give them the opportunity to share it, that we do it. So we can start off on, uh, stay on sequence.
Stay on sequence.
And I don't want to prolong that, but my, it just made me think of this, when we say share, so are we saying these items that are listed here are items that are put on the agenda for administration to publicly share with the board and not just to report?
Yes, they're agenda-
No, what I'm saying is that some things may come to us as a report in the email, we're getting updated. We're saying that these items that are listed here are the ones that are placed on an agenda for presentation and, and board, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, I did, I did, there was-
That's what I hear.
There was the opportunity to, like in some calendars, folks will put on here, if it goes on the consent or the discussion agenda, I didn't do that because I think that's for a, a larger discussion. But as we move forward, there may be reports that, once we get this down, they just show up on the consent agenda and we read it and review it. And then there are others that are going to be discussed. But as of right now, it's, at least on the goal side, all of those are intended to be discussed. Receive a report and have a conversation about it.
I don't know that that answers his question.
No, he- I'm waiting for, I'm, I'm yielding to you, you all, because you all are set on the agenda, I don't know.
Well, um, it is not on the agenda for next Wednesday, but, um, I guess I'll ask the question to Dr. Birdsong, if that information was, um, ready to go and on the monitoring calendar to be presented, would it be, um, ready to go next Wednesday? As a report or do you want a presentation?
I have a compromise. Since, since, since accreditation really isn't about student outcomes anyway, why don't we just receive the written report?
Report, okay. That's fine. That's fine.
And then we can get on schedule later, if that, if that works.
That's fine. All right, we'll receive that in a written report.
Sounds great. Thank you very much for the clarification.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to, the time now is 5:02, so we're going to move on down. Uh, school board members will, will discuss further board operating procedures, but we're going to move down to 3:01 because the time now is 5:02. And Dr. Birdsong would present her proposed 24, 25 school operating budget.
So, good afternoon, Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, members of our community. We are, um, very excited this afternoon to present, um, my proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2025. Ms. Feivey will start the presentation, I will join her, um, after she opens the presentation for the bulk of the presentation. Ms. Feivey will then close the presentation, and we ask you kindly, if you could please allow us an opportunity to get through the full presentation before their questions. I would appreciate that.
Yes, and Dr. Birdsong, I have shared with the board that they have a max of two questions this evening. We're going to let you get through, through the presentation in its entirety and then we'll open the floor up for any questions. All right, Ms. Feivey?
Yeah. Um, good afternoon, Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair Gabriel, Superintendent Birdsong, and members of the school board. We are pleased to, um, provide the superintendent's proposed operating budget for fiscal year 25, which will begin on July 1st of 2024. Uh, while Dr. Birdsong and I, um, will be doing the speaking today, um, this work could not have been done without others who, um, are in the room and, um, and, and those who couldn't be here today. Dwight Durin is, um, our Director of Budget and Grants, and, um, and he, um, has, you know, a lot of the day-to-day, um, uh, task of pulling this together, but it takes, you know, just about everyone, every staff member who's in this room to pull this together. And I would like to thank you all for, um, for what you've, um, done to, um, help us get this together. Looking at, um, okay, I guess I have the clicker. Either way, okay, okay. Topics for discussion, so today we'll, um, talk about, um, the strategic plan, the budget process, um, a bit of a fiscal year 24 budget recap, um, student enrollment trends, the superintendent's priorities for fiscal year 2020, um, 2025, the superintendent's proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2025, and next steps. The next two slides, um, present, um, the budget process. So, um, in October, we began, uh, we, with, um, providing detailed instructions to departments, um, to prepare their budget request, and, uh, and the departments prepared their budget request. In November, um, we, um, reviewed these with the, um, the chiefs and the department heads, and in December, you know, we, based, based on those reviews, uh, we began compiling the data. Um, this budget is based, the state funding for this budget is based on the governor's introduced, um, 2024 to 2026 biennial, biennial budget that he released, um, as well as, um, the city's, um, funding estimate that they've provided for this year, and we, um, received, you know, both of those in, um, late November, early, um, December. We also in December held a public hearing, um, in which we heard from the public, and , um, in January and February, um, we've been working on preliminary estimates of revenues and expenditures, um, were, um, presented to the superintendent and, um, pri, prioritized the needs and made recommendations. We, by, within February, we expect to receive the House and Senate budgets. And, um, the, um, yes, the next slide, um, for February 7th today, uh, we are presenting the superintendent's proposed budget, um, to you, the school board. Uh, we have a, we plan a public hearing on March 6th, um, and, um, our suggested date for the board to approve, uh, the, um, the budget is March 20th, so that we can meet the deadline to have, um, our, um, rec, our budget presented to the city so that, um, they can review it. And, um, and in May, um, the, um, expectation is that city council will appropriate funding for the board's, um, requested budget. If their appropriation is different than, uh, what we've approved, then we'll have to come back and, and work out those differences. And, um, hopefully, the expectation is that by the end of May, uh, we could have a school board adopted budget so that, uh, we could begin working on, uh, the contracts, you know, that are required by the end of June. The, the, this slide, the fiscal year budget by fund, um, the general fund, if so, and looking at the, um, prior year, our current year, and, um, and what we are proposing. In the general fund for fiscal year 23, the general fund operating fund had actual expenditures of 352.9 million. In fiscal 24, our current operating budget, um, the general fund budget is 398.9 million or right at 399 million. We've also had, um, some additional revenue become available, uh, from the state, which, um, which increases, um, the amount available to 404.2 million. And the proposed amount for fiscal 25 is 447.1 million. So a, um, and we'll go into, uh, where those revenues, um, are proposed to come from. For school nutrition fund, uh, our, uh, that fund seems to go up about a million dollars every year over the past couple of years. So, um, for fiscal 23, the actual expenditures were around 21 million. Our current budget has those at 24 million, and, um, for the- And for the fiscal 25 proposed budget, the funding that the state has in its funding calculation is 25 million. And that's what we're using. The grants fund for fiscal 23, our actual expenditures were 102.8 million. That dropped for the current fiscal year, the budget is 42.6 million. Of course, that large drop is related to not having any additional CARES or ARPA funding. So we're getting back to the, our normal size of our grants programs. And in fiscal 25, we have proposed 42.8 million, based on the information we've received from the state. Our capital projects fund in fiscal 23, we actually spent 9.9 million. Current year is budgeted at 26.9 million. We, during the year, we have received some additional availability of funds. That is the, the state grants for Maury and for Booker T. And so that shows a, a total increase of, for fiscal 25, we're proposing 156.7 million. Most of that increase is that we are expecting Maury to begin and we'll, we'll need, you know, that, the funding for fiscal 25. And that brings our total proposed operating budget for all funds at 671.6 million. In this next slide, we're, we're looking at our proposed operating revenue. And starting from bottom left, the state funding is our largest funding. The, based on the information that the state has provided to us, we are budgeting, project, we are proposing to budget that amount at 237.9 million, right at 238 million. The city's funding is projected to be 162.3 million. Federal funding at 5.5 million. Our other local funding at 2.9 million. And then we're, we are proposing in this budget to use our full reversion. Majority of that being used in the general fund and then a portion of it to be used in the capital projects fund. And so the 30.6 million that you see here is the portion of the, of the 2023 reversion that we're proposing to use in the general fund for one-time expenditures. In addition to that, a couple of years ago, there was some fund balance for prevention, intervention, and remediation, and we are also proposing to utilize those funds for the new, for this year. The next slide is on the school enrollment projections. As we've seen before, this shows a steady decline in school enrollment. These amounts do not include our preschool counts. And just, just as additional information, our preschool counts for this year are 7, 1,712 is our total preschool enrollments. Looking, and, and it's also, I think, good to point out that this trend ties very closely with the city of Norfolk's population trend. I just, I went out there again today just to, you look at the census data and it is, they relate very well. You said that's where the decline is coming from. Looking at our fiscal 23 numbers on the right-hand side of that slide, our most recent actual projections for the fall, there's the fall membership and the March ADM, the fiscal 20, for fiscal 23, that was 25.7, 25,730. We project the, the fall membership at, for 24, at 25,648,000. And we're projecting for fiscal 25, this, this proposed budget, fall ADM of 24,845. And, and with that, Dr. Burson?
I decided to stand up this year. I can project a little toddler. So thank you, Ms. Feivey, for your overview. And I'd like to remind our stakeholders that our budget development process was in purposeful alignment with our strategic plan, continuing the drive, equity, and excellence for all. Chairman Buffalo, Vice Chairman Dr. Gabriel, members of the school board, NPS administration and staff, and members of our community. Before I begin my overview of budget recommendations for fiscal year 2425, I would like to provide some context for my proposed recommendations. All of you, with the exception of Mrs. Stone, are veterans of the ins and outs of the budget development process. Consequently, you are well aware that each year we face two recurring imperatives. Number one, expenditures must be in alignment with available resources. And number two, we must strike a balance between our most substantial expenditures, which includes staff, compensation and benefits, and other pressing budgetary needs. We tackle these imperatives in an environment of myriad challenges. Here in Norfolk Public Schools, those challenges include, but are not limited to, the following: a significant shortage of classroom teachers, aging infrastructure, a tremendous percentage of our students whose families live in poverty, a persistent battle with learning loss, pressing social emotional needs amongst our students, and declining student enrollment. Such present circumstances have to be taken into account if we are to develop a budget that is solutions-oriented and future-focused. As you would expect, a starting point was to identify the school division's priorities and then budget accordingly. Thus, this fiscal year 2425 operating budget proposal is shaped on the foundation of these priorities, which are in alignment with the school board's established goals. Number one, employee compensation. Number two, employee recruitment and retention. Number three, rightsizing the school division. Number four, safety and security, which includes needed building maintenance and repairs. And number five, instructional and social emotional learning resources for our students and our schools. I will address each of these priority areas, outlining supporting recommendations and the rationale behind those recommendations. I've stated this before, but it bears repeating. The single most transformative strategy for division-wide school improvement is putting a highly qualified, effective teacher in every classroom. We all know this, this is the most impactful step we can take to improve public education services for our students. And unfortunately, as you well know, our recent years, over recent years, the supply pipeline of qualified teachers has diminished considerably on the national level, statewide, and certainly locally. In October 2023, USA Today published the grim news that an inordinate number of school divisions nationwide had struggled to hire the number of teachers needed for the 2023-2024 school year. The headline of this article, "Teacher Shortages Continue to Plague the U.S. Eighty-six Percent of Public Schools Struggle to Hire Educators." This headline reflects our dismal state of affairs. Eighty-six percent, that is a staggering, staggering data point. Nationwide, we find ourselves in a crisis situation. In September 2023, the state's JLRK, or Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission, made public a report on Virginia's K-12 teacher pipeline. This report cited more than a few disturbing trends. Amongst these trends were the following. The deficit between the number of teachers leaving the profession and the number of newly licensed teachers amounted to 5,482 teachers statewide. On the first day of school during school year 2223, the number of unfielded teacher positions statewide was 4,304. This marked the highest vacancy rate in nine reported years. Yet another disturbing trend in this report is that a smaller proportion of Virginia's teacher workforce was licensed during school year 2223 as compared to one decade ago. JLRK also implemented a survey of licensed teachers who left classrooms in the Commonwealth of Virginia to ascertain the major reasons behind the exits of these teachers. While 46% of licensed teachers who were surveyed reported that they left the profession for the understandable reasons of childcare and family needs or relocation, another disturbing factor was cited. Forty-six percent reported the main reason that they left the profession was due to being what they described as unhappy with being a teacher. And certainly, that is extremely concerning to us. The good news is that a substantial percentage of the teachers who participated in the review indicated that if certain factors were in place, then they would consider a return to the classroom. For example, 43% cited better pay as a reason for reconsideration. Thirty-two percent stated that if there were better systems in place to support or manage student behaviors, then they would be more amenable to a return. And 30% pointed to more in-classroom support for them as classroom teachers as a factor in considering a return to the classroom. As this presentation proceeds, you will find that many of my budget recommendations address these three compelling desires of our teachers. Please know that it's clear to me that I have to work a little harder to convince you that this is a nationwide and statewide problem and not just Norfolk Public Schools' challenge. However, I do believe that I will have to, I don't have to convince you that competition in Hampton Roads, in, in the employment marketplace here, it's quite brutal. And I know that you're, you all are keenly aware of that. Therefore, our environment demands that we shape highly competitive compensation packages. And that is exactly what I am recommending within this budget proposal. This is how my budget proposal recommends moving forward. I recommend raising the starting teacher salary from $53,000 to $57,500. In so doing, not only creates an increase for brand-new teachers, it also moves the salary scale for teachers at all levels, resulting in a significant pay increase for all of our teachers. Provide a one-step increase for 10-month, 11-month, and 12-month teachers in addition to a significant cost of living adjustment. The corresponding increase will be $5,000 for a 10-month teacher, $5,500 for an 11-month teacher, and $6,000 for a 12-month teacher. The average salary increase for teachers will stand at 8.04%. It stands to reason that having an adequate number of substitute teachers is important considering our current teacher vacancy rate. Thus, this proposal recommends increasing the pay for substitute teachers. Specifically, I am recommending that we increase daily substitute teacher pay from $17.50 per hour to $23 per hour. Non-degreed long-term substitute teacher pay from $21 per hour to $26 per hour. And degreed long-term teacher substitute pay from $27 per hour to $33.50 per hour. This strategy will be an investment of an additional $4.4 million during the next school year. Understandably, I have focused on the urgency of a teacher shortage. However, candidly, there are other areas of critical shortage as well, particularly amongst our classified staff. Therefore, I am recommending the following compensation adjustments for our classified staff whose critical expertise we depend upon to support teaching and learning in our classrooms. I recommend that we provide classified employees with a one-step increase as well as a significant cost of living adjustment. Additionally, I am recommending that we raise the starting hourly rate for classified staff from $13.35 per hour to $15.05 per hour. The average wage increase for classified staff will stand at 8.34%. Regarding the leadership of schools and central office departments, my recommendation is as follows. Provide a one-step salary increase or a one-step increase as well as a significant cost of living adjustment for 11-month and 12-month administrators. Salary increases for 11-month and 12-month administrators will be $5,500 and $6,000 respectively. The average salary increase for school-level and central office administrators stands at Another salary recommendation I would like to make is to increase the contract length of elementary school assistant principals from 11-month contracts to 12-month contracts. Our elementary schools need administrative support year-round, and the former model of contracting elementary school principals only 11 months of the year is just simply outdated. Extensive planning for programming takes place during the summer as well as student scheduling and professional development. Elementary principals need the support of their assistant principals during the summer month that they have traditionally not worked. NPS is the only school division within the region that continues to implement the 11-month contract model. An astounding piece of good news is that the school division anticipates that there will not be an increase in health insurance premiums for employees in the coming school year. This defies a trend of annual increases in healthcare premiums. I am pleased that Norfolk Public Schools can protect the profound impact of solid wage and salary increases by ensuring that health insurance premiums do not reduce actual take-home pay for our employees. As you are aware, beyond annual salary and benefit recommendations, this budget proposal concludes a three-year salary and wage compression mitigation plan. Our strategic plan, continuing the drive, is focused upon equity and excellence for all. This includes students as well as our employees. Our comp, our compression mitigation efforts have been all about restoring equity to our wage and salary scales. Board members who have served in the role for the past several years should know and understand the hurdles, the hurdles, the extreme hurdles the school division has faced in this regard. One of the challenges has been that our workforce is quite large, so even small increases have a tremendous financial impact. Additionally, the many years of having no step movement prior to this administration unnaturally and unfairly compressed employees' wages and salaries, resulting in little differences in salaries between newer employees and more veteran ones. And yet another challenge was developing a resolution plan that was sustainable over the long call for the school division. The NPS administration and the school board, we've worked extremely hard to implement a plan that would help clear those hurdles, and I think we're almost there. So this slide represents us, or reminds us of the progress that we've made during year one and year two of the implementation of the compression mitigation plan. And it also outlines recommendations for the third and final year of the plan. Please look closely at the recommendation for fiscal year 2425. With this recommendation, eligible employees hired before February 1, 2012 will receive a one-step increase plus two additional steps to account for the lack of step increases in fiscal year 13 and 17. Eligible employees hired between February, February 1, 2012 and January 2012 and January 2031, 2015 are recommended to receive a one-step increase plus an additional one-step to account for the lack of step increase during school year 17. And to underscore the equity of this plan, I ask that you pay particular attention to the second column of the chart entitled "Total Action", which outlines the extent of the step adjustments for each of these categories of employees over the plan's three years of implementation, ranging from an adjustment of a total of eight additional steps over a three-year period to four additional steps. The total cost of addressing salary and wage compression within the fiscal year 2425 budget proposal is $5.5 million. Upon full implementation of this three-year plan next school year, of course, if supported by the board, will be an investment of $13 million to demonstrate that we value and desire to retain our employees who have remained with Norfolk Public Schools through some very difficult and challenging times and for a significant number of years. So thank you. Together, the NPS administration and the school board have done a great deal to restore integrity to the NPS salary scales. Even as I say that, I realize that there will be individuals who feel that the school division needs to do even more to shore up salaries and wages within our school division. Colleagues, I must remind you that our actions to ensure that we have the most competitive salaries and wages within our region and the state, it will be more aligned with those associated with a marathon and not a sprint. While I understand that many will advocate otherwise, I ask that you consider the issue from my perspective, the chief executive officer of this school division. It is my duty, it is my duty to make recommendations to the board that are fiscally responsible and ensure that all wage and salary increases are sustainable over the long term. At this moment in time, employee salaries and benefits comprise 84% of this recommendation. Think about that. We only have 16% of available funding to support all other expenses associated with teaching and learning. As such, we must provide reasonable funding that directly benefits our children. As we all know, our funding partner, the city of Norfolk, has adopted a policy that forbids one-time funding being used to underwrite salary increases. As we approach our plan to address significant reversion, please be reminded that the size of that pool of funding is a direct result of the significant number of vacancies that we have within our school division. Our goal as we move ahead is to reverse that negative trend. In so doing, the pool of available funding will shrink considerably in the future. Therefore, sustainability must be a vital consideration as we evaluate our short-term and long-term needs as a school division. And with that said, let me move on to another recommendation that addresses compensation for school staff by recommending that we provide stipends for the inevitable additional workload beyond classroom instruction. In that vein, I recommend continuing stipends that were previously underwritten by ESER funding. The administration believes that these stipends are important enough that operating funds should now be used to provide for them. These stipends are meant for staff who take on duties that directly impact the social, emotional well-being of our children, which include PBIS building-level leaders, school wellness champions, and club sponsors. The projected cost of these three stipends is $230,993. Other operating funds are also proposed to be set aside to support stipends for staff who take on the responsibilities associated with grounds patrol and class coverage. The first stipend acknowledges the extra duties involved with ensuring the safety and security of our school's grounds. And of course, the second stipend will address shoring up our ability to cover classrooms in the midst of a teacher shortage and when teachers of record are not present in their classrooms. The projected cost of these two stipends is $2,586, so a significant investment. From here, I will move on to the second priority of my budget proposal, employee recruitment and retention. This slide, which outlines proposed bonuses, is one most of you have seen in previous budget presentations. I am including it here because I, I need to make an important point here. For three years, the school division has used ESER funding to support these bonuses for teachers and staff. Now that ESER funding will be expiring, we must decide if we want to assume these expenditures in the operating budget, and I am recommending that assumption. The total proposed expenditure for these employee recruitment and retention bonuses is $588,600. Another area of critical importance is to demonstrate to employees who have remained with Norfolk Public Schools that they are valued and appreciated for their contributions to provide a high-quality education to our children. I am proposing that the school division provide a $3,000 retention bonus to eligible staff during the 2024-2025 school year. $1,500 will be paid in December 2024, while the remaining $1,500 will be paid in May of 2025. The administration would work to define who is eligible for the retention bonus if approved. However, the idea is to provide a bonus primarily to full-time contracted employees and other employees to whom the division has provided bonuses to in the past, and ensuring that they return for the next school year. Providing a retention bonus of this magnitude would be an $18.5 million investment in our employees. This slide outlines some expenditures that are planned for the Department of Human Resources that the administration believes will aid in our recruitment and retention efforts. For example, I'm quite confident that we would all agree that we must be more aggressive in the areas of promoting and marketing Norfolk Public Schools as well as significantly improving, improving our own boarding process for new employees. And the projected cost for these expenditures is $214,000. In addition, providing a mechanism for tuition reimbursement not only improves an employee's bottom line, but also contributes to employees' growth and satisfaction. Therefore, this proposal recommends that we maintain funding to support this initiative at $290,000. The school board has expressed the expectation that the administration employ a laser-like focus on schools that have high teacher turnover since that trend contributes to students' academic struggles. During this school year, the administration launched the IGNITE program at Lindenwood Elementary School, which, as you know, has had its share of school-wide academic struggles. For quite some time, Lindenwood's teacher vacancy rate has been higher than most of our elementary schools. This school year, the staffing situation at Lindenwood has been much improved. We believe the IGNITE program, which has provided retention bonuses or recruitment bonuses for teachers, has contributed to that improvement. On the first day of school for students this school year, 78% of teacher positions were filled. However, during school year 2223, only 47% of teacher positions were filled on the first day of school for, for students. And so for the coming fiscal year, we are proposing that the IGNITE program recruitment bonus be continued at Lindenwood Elementary in hopes that it will positively impact outcomes for students at that school. Additionally, the administration believes that the increased stability of the teachers or the school's teacher corps has contributed to improved student performance at Lindenwood. As you may recall, in a view of, in a review of our latest SOL performance data, the school improved its annual pass rate, rates in all tested areas for all students, for that all-students group. And as a component of the IGNITE program, classroom teachers of record, to include special education teachers, were provided a bonus to remain at the school for fiscal year 24, or this year, fiscal year or school year 2324. The allocation for the recommended continuation of the IGNITE program at Lindenwood, which includes tuition reimbursement for two classes and a $500 supply allowance, is $245,000. And now, let's move on to the third priority. All right, I might need to take a sip for that one. All right. When our educational and facilities planning consultants presented a study to the school board last school year in March of '23, it included a data point that we have understandably latched on to. As you may recall, the study outlined Norfolk Public Schools' declining enrollment, which is aligned with the city's declining population and underutilization of specific elementary, middle, and high school facilities. Data support that since 2013, the division has operated between three to 17 surplus schools. A recent presentation by our consultant in August of 2023 continued to drive home the point that the cost of underutilization is significant, is quite significant. It is estimated that over the past 10 years, operating these surplus schools has cost the division approximately $81 million. We must begin the process of closing and consolidating schools. In the face of declining student enrollment, which again is evidence to be aligned with the declining population of the city, we cannot justify our current inventory of school facilities. We must acknowledge that recapturing millions of dollars being spent on an underutilized inventory would be a profound catalyst for large-scale improvement of Norfolk Public Schools' operations. It would allow us to right-size our workforce, which would help to alleviate a plaguing teacher shortage. It would free up funding to improve salaries and benefits further. In addition, the closure of schools that are under capacity would significantly lower the cost of our capital improvement plan. We all know this painful fact. Maintaining our aging infrastructure in a timely and wholesale manner has proven to be an insurmountable funding challenge. And even as I state this, I realize the task before us. It is extremely enormous. I do realize that. One that will be fraught with intense emotions on the part of our stakeholders. Students and their families and school staff members typically love their schools, and they draw a sense of identity and community from them. When we begin the process of closure and consolidation, we will inevitably face disagreement and disappointment as stakeholders ask us such questions such as, "Why our school? Why our school? Why not the school next door, across the street? Why would you want to sacrifice the intimate, family-like atmosphere of a smaller school in favor of a larger, more impersonal one? And have you thought about the cost of the emotional upheaval to the children?" So now, let me tackle the recommendations designed to begin, to begin this extremely complex process. They include returning two facilities to the city of Norfolk. Those facilities are the Coronada School, which has been vacant for years, and the present Hampton Boulevard location for the Madison, Madison Alternative Education Center. While the expenses associated with removing these two facilities out of our inventory are, it's not enormous, I think it's a move in the right direction. The administration further recommends that the vacant Easton preschool facility be retrofitted to accommodate two secondary programs. The Division Secondary Alternative Education Program, currently housed at Madison, and the Open Campus Program. The approximate, the approximate total cost of retrofitting the Easton facility for a secondary alternative education program is $500,000. Our longstanding professional relationship with our current educational and facilities planning consultant has translated into his knowledge of Norfolk Public Schools' challenges. Thus, we are recommending that $130,000 be set aside for continued educational and facilities planning efforts that include the development of a right-sizing plan for Norfolk Public Schools, which includes critical components of a robust community engagement plan. We have to engage our community with this moving forward. Some of the associated expenses anticipated for this plan are listed on this slide. These efforts would constitute Phase One. Additional phases are outlined here. Please note that Phase Two will also rely upon another round of robust community engagement. Phase One will be designed to help the community understand how we are proceeding and provide stakeholders an opportunity to have voice in the shaping of recommendations. Phase Two of the community engagement will involve informing and hearing from school communities that will be affected by proposed closures, consolidations, and resulting rezoning recommendations. The administration cannot predict, we can't predict at this moment exactly how many closures or consolidations will occur within the impending phases. We may very well find there are some options that can be implemented within Phase Two without significant disruption to the school division. However, however, lost my place. We believe the most substantive changes will be revealed during Phase Two, during Phase Three. And as you are aware, our educational and facilities planning consultants have embarked upon a portfolio study that will help determine factors that are correlated with positive outcomes for Norfolk Public Schools, and those findings should help to drive the decisions on which schools will be recommended for closure and which schools will be recommended to be consolidation sites. Some data related to the portfolio study were recently presented or shared during last month's work session. I'm sure you all recall. As I previously mentioned a moment ago during this presentation, closing and consolidating schools will significantly lower our capital improvement costs. But even more importantly, with a smaller inventory of facilities and more funding, the administration will be able to improve our ability to provide repairs for and renovate schools more expeditiously. I believe we can all agree that attending schools and modernized facilities would not only improve the educational experiences of our children, but would also create safer and more secure learning environments for them. And on that note, let me move on to our next priority area, which is very much in alignment with right-sizing the school division, and that is priority number four, safety and security, which includes the critical imperative of continued building, maintenance, and repairs. Previous budget proposals have included significant augmentation of security measures from weapons detection systems in every school to additional safety and security personnel. In fact, since the 2020-2021 school year, Norfolk Public Schools has expended more than $8 million in improving its personnel coverage and security infrastructure. Our planned FY2425 allocation builds on those accomplishments. Most significant is the planned $1.9 million purchase of additional security cameras to move NPS toward the goal of ensuring all schools have state-of-the-art video coverage of their campuses. This budget proposal will also provide other needed security equipment, such as security handheld wands to detect weapons and other undesired objects, as well as four vehicles that can be utilized by our five floating security supervisors as they conduct their security checks throughout the school division. Building, maintenance, and repairs are indeed critical components of priority four. However, I will not go into great detail on our capital improvement plan here as Chief Academic, not Chief Academic Officer. I'm gonna give you a break, Dr. Poole. Chief Spivey will be sharing some details with you about our CIP plan in the concluding part of this presentation. However, this slide represents a big-picture look at the proposed $156.7 million capital improvement plan, which notably includes $137 million for the rebuilding of Maury High School and $19.7 million to address items such as window, door, and roof replacements, electrical upgrades, the replacement of school buses, three football field conversions to turf, which I'll address in a bit, deferred maintenance, and other projects. And now, I will move And now I will move on to our fifth priority area, instructional and social-emotional learning resources for students in schools. An excerpt from an abstract of the Child Development Journal entitled "The State of Evidence for Social and Emotional Learning: A Contemporary Meta-Analysis of Universal School-Based SEL Interventions" notes that students who participate in universal school-based SEL interventions experience significantly improved skills, attitudes, behaviors, school climate and safety, peer relationships, school functioning, and academic achievement. Moreover, research overwhelmingly supports that there is an existing need for well-planned instruction and social-emotional learning programs and strategies. The excerpt on this slide is just one example of the body of research available to us today that supports this assertion. As we are all aware, the effects of the pandemic remain with us. I know we get tired of talking about it, but it's still here. Over the past few years, many of our schools have experienced significant student behavior challenges. As such, we need to continue to provide supports to schools as they work with children and families to address undesirable behaviors. The expansion of mental health and behavioral management services to schools is a must. Therefore, I am requesting that the school division maintains the three thousand five hundred dollar stipend for staff who earned registered behavior technician certifications. Moreover, within this proposal, I am requesting the strategic addition of the following new positions to support building administrators and classroom teachers with addressing the mental health and behavioral needs of our students. And that would be four additional mental health, social workers, and three additional behavioral specialists or behavior specialists. This planned expenditure totals five hundred twenty-seven thousand two hundred ninety dollars. The expiration of ESER funding is initiating my recommendation to move the cost of a school psychologist position, a social worker position, and mental health and tiered support contractual services into the operating budget for continued support for our children with disabilities. Additionally, this budget proposal supports increasing our complement of occupational therapist positions by one additional position and increasing contracted instructional services in the area of special education to support IDEA mandated services, again for our children with disabilities. Norfolk Public Schools must become more systematic with purchasing and replacing musical instruments for our students. Therefore, the administration is recommending a five-year instrument replacement cycle with fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five marking year number one. This should strengthen our music program for our students considerably. Also, the additional proposed funding for the governor's school takes into account increased tuition rates, as well as an increased number of slots for Norfolk Public Schools' children or students, from sixty slots this year to sixty-six slots during school year twenty-five. Regarding the matter of tuition for Virtual Virginia, the school division previously relied upon ESER funding to address increased costs associated with our students' enrollment. I am now recommending that we transition all associated expenses to the operating budget for school year twenty-five so that our students can continue to have access to this program. Other planned expenditures include increasing funding for contracted transportation services to support the needs of our students whose families are experiencing homelessness and our students with disabilities. The division has experienced an increase in both participation and cost for these critical services. In last year's budget proposal, I recommended, and the school board approved, additional resources for our English learners to include funding for translation services, curriculum materials, as well as a new position to address the needs of and support the closing of achievement gaps for our growing population of L students. This year, I am recommending that Norfolk Public Schools invest in additional services for our English learners and their families through the opening of a welcome center where our families can secu, can secure a variety of supports and services to include, but not limited to, initial testing for students, pre-registration for school enrollment, and family learning sessions regarding topics such as school attendance and how to support students' academic success. This center is planned to be located at the Rosemont Facility, which is in close proximity to many of our L families. I'm also recommending that we expand our provision of translation and other contracted services such as universal document translation as to better meet the needs of students and provide more effective, efficient, and productive communication between students' homes and our schools. And finally, I am recommending continued cultural competency training for our, our staff, which will not only benefit our L students, but students from all racial and ethnic backgrounds. Planned expenditures for the resources noted on this slide and the previous two slides for students in schools totaled six million, seven hundred eighty-nine thousand, three hundred forty dollars. Perhaps the most significant expenditure that will prove to be a tremendous investment in our children is to support individualized and small-group tutoring to improve their literacy in the areas of reading and mathematics. Simply stated, simply stated, reading is a fundamental skill that is required for our students to be successful in the classroom and in life. And when our children become more fluent readers and their level of reading comprehension increases, then we can expect them to want to put down their cell phones and pick up a good book. In the words of Toni Morrison, "Books are a form of political action, books are knowledge, books change your mind." And that's what we want to do for our children. We want to inspire their love for reading, which will impact them, which will have an impact for them in all areas of their lives in a very, very positive, productive way. Norfolk Public Schools has augmented curricular resources with targeted purchases of educational software. I will not go into the details of these, of these programs for the sake of time, but this slide and the one following details those planned expenditures. As you will note, the bulk of these expenses were originally funded by ESER, and the administration is recommending that they transition to the operating budget for fiscal year twenty-five. The proposed E-rate purchase on this slide is necessary to ensure that we meet a federal match. Other proposed technology expenditure recommendations include making a necessary technology infrastructure purchase, replacement of student Chromebooks, let me say that again, replacement of student Chromebooks, and a continuing plan to digitize and archive student records. These planned technology expenditure recommendations is at one point six million dollars. My final recommendation in this priority area is the purchase of field turf for Booker T. Washington, Lake Taylor, and Norview High Schools. As you are aware, not one MPS high school has field turf, unlike other high schools across the region and our state. When you have the opportunity to conduct a review of high school sports facilities within our region, you will find that Norfolk Public Schools is woefully lacking in this area, and I do believe that our children deserve so much better. While this is indeed a significant cost, there will be savings in the long, long term as it relates to maintenance, personnel, and water cost. Having state-of-the-art football fields will not only benefit our students at these three high schools, it will be a resource that can and will be utilized by other schools within our school division and certainly within the region. The total investment in our student athletes would be approximately five point one million dollars. Members of the school board, I now want to share with you information regarding the possibility of tackling one new initiative for school year twenty-twenty-five. This recommendation addresses a request many members of our community made through, through or during public hearings and public comment periods during school board meetings. These stakeholders made it very clear that they felt that there is a pressing need for community schools within our school division. Community schools involve providing a system of supports for schools in underserved and under-resourced communities. Wraparound services typically provided within community schools take into account such areas as mental health, social-emotional learning, medical and health-related services, and extensive family and community engagement, just to name a few. The administration is recommending that four of our schools serve as pilot locations for implementing the community schools model. We have named these pilot locations Nothing But Equity and Excellence Learning Centers, or what we refer to them as EELCs. These schools are PB Young Elementary School, J Cox Elementary School, the Ruffner Three-Eight School, and Booker T. Washington High School. These schools were selected to participate in the community schools pilot program due to a variety of reasons, to include the significant academic challenges these schools have faced spanning, spanning over numerous years, and the poverty level of some of the families served within the schools. In implementing a community schools pilot program, it is our desire to level the playing field for our children who are served within these schools. Please know that our leadership team gave stakeholders input much thought and discussion, and began studying successful community schools' models across the nation. One pioneer in this area is child psychiatrist James Comer. Many of our stakeholders will perhaps remember how Dr. Herman Clark, former principal Richard Bolin Elementary School and MPS Division Cav Leader, how he modeled his school operations on the Comer methods, methods and achieved, I mean, just wonderful, wonderful results. Thus, we revisited Mr. Comer's work and the work of other school divisions as well. From this research and our own professional experiences, we developed a model we believe will work for Norfolk Public Schools. I will outline some of the particulars of the Equity and Excellence Learning Centers, or EELCs, so you can understand the planned allocation. Because this is such an important and far-reaching recommendation, there's temptation, I know, to delve into the operational details in depth. However, since we don't have the necessary time to accomplish that today, I, I suggest that we come back and have the administration provide a, a presentation to the school board in the future. In the meantime, I will provide a more global overview of what we have planned. First, we plan to shape the centers based upon four pillars of effective community schools. These include a commitment to offer extended learning opportunities, a commitment to meaningful family and community engagement, the deep implementation of multi-tiered systems of support, and an operational philosophy of distributed or collaborative leadership and practices. If approved by the board, the work involved in the coming months would include developing a wraparound services team led by the newly-appointed Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Affairs, who is smiling in the back, a big smile, conducting these assessments among families at our schools, at each of these schools, researching and recruiting supportive community partners from mental health agencies to those partners who could provide enrichment opportunities for our students. The expectation would be that each school would develop an action plan for year one. Suffice it to say, not all plans would look alike, as they would be built upon the basis of each school's needs assessment. The administration envisions the second and third years of the project would involve expanding enrichment offerings and an even higher level of community engagement. As you can surmise, we must develop plans of action that are sustainable and thus intelligently phased. For year one, costs would encompass a two thousand five hundred dollar stipend for classroom teachers of record and special education teachers, as they would be expected to take on additional responsibilities for each school and will be laying the groundwork for the EELCs to fully engage in the community schools model. The administration also believes that these stipends will support the recruitment of teachers from each of these schools, as they have been deemed schools that are, what we say, challenged by retention. Other planned expenditures for EELCs includes funding to support varied enrichment activities before, during, and after school, aligned with each school's ELC implementation plan, a one and one new twelve-month teacher specialist position who will work closely with our Director of DEI, building principals, and school staffs to develop ELC implementation plans and assist with executing the work involved in, in operating a successful community schools model. School board members, and I'm sure you are glad, I am now concluding this proportion, this portion of the presentation, but I wanted to be thorough. But before doing so, I would like to offer a personal aside. As a former recipient of a scholarship award in her name, I have always admired and have great respect for Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune, known as the Female Booker T. Washington, on whose shoulders I stand today as an African-American female educator. Because of Dr. Bethune's legacy, I feel obligated to continue to fight the good fight despite the daily challenges that I encounter as an African-American female leader in public education. Dr. Bethune, she paved the way for me, and I take seriously the opportunity to make a difference in the lives of children and give them hope for the future. Dr. Bethune was born to enslaved parents and became one of the most prominent Black educators and civil and women's rights leaders of the twentieth century. I find her words and philosophy so inspiring and wholeheartedly embrace her eloquent words as expressed in this inspirational quote. We have a power, a powerful potential, I'd like to start over because it's important to me. We have a powerful potential in our youth, and we must have the courage, we must have the courage to change old ideas and practices so we can make, so that we may direct their power toward good ends, toward good ends. Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune, she speaks across the decades to us. The potential that lives in the hearts and minds of our students is immeasurable. We must tap into it and help channel it. Yes, there are tried and true strategies we can employ to help our children succeed, but we must also have the courage and the stamina to go beyond. Innovation cannot just be a nice byword for Norfolk Public Schools. It can't just be a byword. We must strike the right balance between polishing what we know works and seeking new ways to uplift our children, our children. This budget proposal has been shaped with those ends in mind. So I thank you for your kind attention, and at this time, I'm going to turn it back over to Chief Finance Officer Spivey so that she can provide to you some information about the governor's biennial budget, and then we look forward to receiving each of your two questions at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bertong. As we've talked about before, in looking at the general fund, we are proposing a four hundred forty-seven point one million dollar budget. That is an increase of forty-eight point one million dollars, or a twelve percent increase over the current year. The, as we've already mentioned, here's more of the numbers. The majority of our budget by spend, by expense type are our salaries and benefits, which make up eighty-four percent, with the remaining sixteen percent in the other areas. I'm looking at the next slide. We show our breakdown by functional area. The instructional services is seventy-two percent of our budget. In addition to having instructional services, we, going around the, the chart in the right direction, administration, attendance and health services is an area that we are budgeting at six percent of our budget, twenty-six point nine million, right at twenty-seven million dollars. School transportation is another twenty million dollars, or four percent of the budget. Operations and maintenance, which includes areas like building, maintenance, ground services, and security services, is twelve percent of the proposed budget. services, and security services, is 12% of the proposed budget at $52.1 million. Facilities, which are our facility improvements, that we contain in the operating fund, is $8.3 million, which is 2% of the budget, and technology is $18.5 million, or 4% of the operating, of the general operating budget. Just to note that technology includes technology in the classrooms, so it's not just the purchase of other technologies. This slide is the balancing of the general fund. So I've compared the fiscal '24 available funding, which is our current year, with the proposed budget. As you can see, there was not much of an increase in our state funding this year. In the general fund, that increase is $5,400. The cities, using the revenue sharing formula that they have, their estimate of the increase in funding from the city is $6.6 million. We're looking at an increase of $25,000 in federal funding, to bring that to $5.5 million, and we expect that our local funding will be lower. And the primary reason for that is, for the past few years, we have been receiving indirect cost revenue, because we were managing our own ESAR funds and other COVID-related funds. As those funds have been spent down, we will have less of that indirect cost. So again, that was revenue to us, for our staff handling those things. And so there was a one-time expenditure last year, which was a transfer from the textbook fund, so that's not recurring. We, as I've already mentioned, we are proposing to use the full amount of the fiscal '23 reversion for this budget, $30,572,000. We're proposing to use in the general fund. And in addition to those funds, we had unspent fund balance that was state revenues for student prevention, intervention, and remediation services, and we have also budgeted those in this budget, to bring us to the total. A new area we haven't talked about in detail was when we finished our fiscal year '23, and those financial statements were audited. We determined that we had $32.97 million of funds that went into reversion. This is an analysis of the summarized areas of where those funds were derived, and which funds we did not spend in last year's budget. The vast majority of those funds, which relate to salaries and benefits, are related to the positions that NPS was unable to fill. Looking at these amounts, this amount of reversion, we went into detail, let the line item detail seeing where those reversion areas were, and which of those we believed that we are not targeted to spend in upcoming years. As things shift, we will have to shift the funding, but for now, in the hiring environment that we're operating in, which means substitutes, qualified substitutes in some of our schools, the cost shifts, and there are, so certain areas, and it is primarily in those types of areas, where we believe we have more permanent savings that we can use towards this budget. And just to summarize that, the new initiatives and increased ongoing costs for this budget total $55.8 million. Using all of our other revenue, the revenue is $42.8 million, so we use the savings that we believe we can get in these areas that were part of reversion last year. We're using what we believe, about $13 million, to fund these new initiatives, so that the money we receive today can go to today's students. And that is one of the premises that this budget is built on. The next slide, you've seen this slide before, and we've updated it for this year. We show an example of a classroom teacher and a custodian, based on the proposed salary increases, what their salary would look like on step 1, 10, 20, and 30. So using, I'm going to skip down to step 10 as the example, specific example. Their current contract would be $58,668 today. With their step, that would take them to $59,762, which is a 1.9% increase. But rather than doing just a step, we're proposing to have a flat amount for 10-month teachers of $5,000. So the additional amount shows, the total amount shows in that final column of, this is what their contract budget, I mean, their contract pay would be for a step 10 classroom teacher who has a 10-month contract. The same thing, similar situation with the custodian, too. For, this is a classified position, with classified positions, the proposed increase is $2 an hour for all classified employees. So again, using step 10 as an example, this custodian currently makes $31,792. Where the step change for that person would take them to $32,377,000, or a 1.8% increase, but with what we are proposing, which is a $2 an hour increase, it takes that salary for the fiscal '25 contract period to $35,824, which is an increase of 12.7%. We've talked about the compression that is in there, and that is on top of the other things we've talked about. Healthcare has not increased. On the next slide, there's sample teachers and sample other employees to show what their progress over the past years has been, fiscal '25, and shows that the amount they receive is not reduced by any increases in healthcare. So that's shown, these two slides, the next two slides, and then I want to get into the capital improvement budget. These first areas are things you've seen before. It's the $10,000, $10 million of income that we've had coming from the city, $1,004. Bus replacements, $3 million for bus replacements, $3 million for deferred maintenance. And then we've had the swift parcel funds for a few years. That $6 million will not recur next year. This is the final year of that. We've left the debt issue, these are bonds that we expect the city will issue for Maury, to fund Maury. We've left that amount at $137 million. Now, that will be combined with the $30 million grant that we've received from the state, as well as a $3 million amount that we had already dedicated to that project. So this is just showing the one year. In the capital project, we're using about $2.4 million of reversion, and the full amount of the city's true-up funds of $7.3 million. A list of the projects are on this next slide, and Dr. Birdsong mentioned the newer projects. Other than there are two security-related projects that we're proposing to add, one is for vestibules for some of the schools where there is direct access into the student population, to give a vestibule, to have a barrier there, and the other is electronic access for doors when the schools are unoccupied. And then the final slide is the active capital projects. So the CIP is an ongoing thing. These projects take more than a year to accomplish, and the ones on this list are projects that were budgeted in previous years, and they are at some point in their being accomplished right now. So they are considered active projects. Our next steps, as I mentioned earlier, we suggest that the school board adopt a budget by March 22nd, so that we can get that to the city council by the statutory deadline of April 1st. And again, if the city was to adopt something different than what you, as a school board, approve, we would have the month of May to iron those differences out. With that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Well, well done. Well done. My hat's off to you, because I know this budget, putting a budget together, proposed budget is work. And thank you, thank you. So I did share with the board that I would give each board member an opportunity of two questions around the proposed budget. So we're going to go around, because the time is getting away from us, and we will have additional time beyond us sitting here, of course, to ask questions around the proposed budget, but we're going to get started. Mr. Clanton, we're going to start with you and come around. Please skip me, and we're going to go with Dr. Gabriel and move around. Ms. Stone, if you have any questions. Mr. Cloud, let us know if she needs to read her statement.
Ms. Stone, could you make your statement now, or just when she's ready to ask her questions and speak?
Get out of the way now, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Before we enter into discussion on the fiscal year '25, I have to disclose that I am the spouse of a school board employee whose salary would stand to be increased as a result of this proposed budget, so I have to acknowledge that that personal interest does exist, though it is an interest that I share with thousands of other NPS employees and their immediate families. So my participation in this discussion does not merely serve to benefit my family alone. Because of that, I am able to participate in this discussion, and any future vote that we take on it fairly objectively and in the public interest. And I have filed a written declaration to this effect with our clerk, which states this information more in full and can be requested by the public if needed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stone. And so we're going to reroute. I said this way, we're going to start with Mr. Clanton, then we're going to go to Dr. Martin. So, Mr. Clanton, you're going to start off?
Thank you. First and foremost, Dr. Birdsong, I'm very pleased with what I'm seeing here. There are a couple of things that I do. I know I've got two questions, and the rest I'll follow with an email, but I just felt for clarity. This budget definitely meets the needs around our teachers. I see that we're finally upholding on that. And the equity centers, we've heard a lot about that. But I do want clarity. I was just seeing here if this was just a roundup, because I don't want this coming back. On slide fiscal '20, '25, recommended pay raises. Step 1 classroom teacher, it has with the contract budget at $58,000, that's 9.4%, but on the document in your book, you have it at $57,500. So was that just a roundup? Because I-
It is $57,500. I don't-
Well, the slide has $58,000, so I don't want the wrong-
Wait a minute, the slide? What slide? I'm sorry, can we go back to that slide?
The slide number is that?
Seven, five, that might be a typo.
Slide 58, maybe?
Thank you. Go back to that.
Yep, it's 58. Yeah, that green one. In that corner for year one, I just want to make sure, because I don't want wrong stuff going out, and we have anything coming back. So we're saying a starting teacher's salary is $57,500 with everything?
Yes, that is-
Not a roundup, right?
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to-
So that correction will need to be made. It is $57,500.
I just want to be transparent, have the right information out there.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Durin, good evening.
Come on, come on.
Come to the podium.
Microphone, please. This is Dwight Durin.
He's the budget guy.
Our director of budget.
I just want to make sure I got the right chain, that's all.
Okay. And I can't even see up there, Mr. Clanton, so.
This example is a teacher that's currently in the system, on step 1.
So that would be their next year going up?
So that's what their next year's salary is going to be.
So it's a $5,000 increase, is that what we're saying?
It's a $5,000 increase for this particular teacher. So that teacher currently is on step 1, making $53,000.
Got it.
You're going to get that $5,000 increase, which is a step plus a significant cost-of-living increase, which brings them up to $58,000.
Got it. So a new teacher would just be step 0.
Well, step 1.
Step 1 coming in.
Right, step 1 coming in for '25.
So we got, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Yes.
Great, thank you for everybody.
That would be for step 2 teacher.
Step 2 going in next year.
Yes, this is a currently step 1.
So my other item in here, and I know it's a multitude, but I just want to, let me go to Maury High School, particularly in budget, I'm looking in the budget book at $150. And as I'm coming off of that, just want to make sure here, that national teacher average, if I'm not mistaken, is $57,803 as of January 26 of 2024. That's the national teacher average of salary for a teacher starting, $57,803, and we're coming in at $57,500. I just wanted to point that out, where we are making a significant investment in that one. The Maury High School piece that I was looking in here was the amount of money. We have $137,000 in the CIP funds, but when I was looking at-
Million, million.
Million. But what I was looking at was a $30 million that was currently being spent this fiscal year.
This year.
This year.
It wouldn't be in this budget.
Yeah, I know it's not going to be in that one, but that's being spent right now. But I'm still showing an anticipated completion of this project of 2029, when an average high school is 12 to 24 months. So I'm a little concerned why it's taken almost five years for high school to get done in the budget. So I'm going to come back to that, because the numbers just aren't, amount of money we're putting in investment, and timing is not adding up for me. And also, which will be another thing with CIP coming back, we still have two other, three other elementary schools, and when does that start? Because there's a narrative that's out there that city councils already voted on something, but the funding's there. I don't know if that's just to say we're going to move forward with that, but this capital improvement piece component here is a little concerning for me, and so I will follow it with an email on it. I won't take up any time on that one, but I only got two. But that's what I wanted to kind of highlight for me.
We appreciate that.
All right.
Dr. Martin?
I just want to say, you know, once again, Dr. Birdsong, I believe that you've hit all of the marks. You're always paying attention, and someone's taking notes, because if this hits all the priorities, it aligns with our strategic plan that we've adopted. It continues existing commitments, such as to staff and improving and rightsizing, and I love the introduction and new branding of the Equity and Excellence Centers. That's wonderful. It's something that I think our staff and our students can really get excited about and behind. It's very positive. Also, improving the athletic fields at all of our schools would be, is wonderful, or step in that direction. One thing I would ask, if possible, is that we, because we're so limited on space, is, for example, with the football fields, that we can see if we can also use them for lacrosse fields, because I know that's really growing in this area, and unless we have extra money and we can do lacrosse fields somehow, too. But I'm just trying to think in that way, so that we're not limited as those changes, you know, hopefully will be available for us- as those changes, you know, hopefully will be available for our students. Yeah, and just a word change. We, I see rebuild of Maury High Schools in here a lot, and I've heard from the community that that's confusing for some people, and that they, because when they hear rebuild, they think rebuild the same building.
The historical building.
And so it should maybe be new build instead of rebuild.
I get it. That's fair.
Anyways, thank you so much for all the work that you all put into this.
Welcome. I appreciate that. Ms. Stone?
You will appreciate this. I am new to the budget process, and I am still digesting the information in front of me, so I don't have any specific questions. So I will yield most of my time, except to say that I do appreciate the amount of effort and thought put into our teachers, because when we're thinking about student outcomes, the most direct person on student outcomes is the teacher in the classroom. And the more investment we put in them is a direct correlation to how students perform, which we know. I don't need to say that to you, you know it. I just appreciate the very intentional work done to acknowledge the people that are here and doing the hard work. And, yeah, I appreciate that part of it. There's been a lot of thought put into it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stone. Ms. Basine?
Going back and forth. Nope?
Nope.
Okay.
Come on.
I do. I echo what has been said already. I appreciate you, Dr. Birdsong, and the budget team for the hard work that you've put into preparing this budget. One of my overarching questions is really around, and I see, you know, you've talked a lot about alignment with the strategic plan, but alignment with our board goals. And so that's something that I would like to hear a little more about, about what evidence there is that, you know, the things in this budget, the items in this budget, and the strategies in the budget will directly correlate with improving, achieving our goals, or with, not improving, but achieving our goals. And so I don't know if you could talk a little bit about that, Dr. Birdsong?
I'm happy to. At the end of the day, with our strategic plan, all of the board's goals, established goals, align with our strategic plan. And I did mention that during my presentation, that we did certainly look at the goals of the board as we worked to develop this budget. For example, I know the board is very much interested in the literacy, improved literacy for our children in the area, in the areas of reading and mathematics. We're making a significant $8.5 million investment in that. So that's directly aligned with the board's goals. Certainly, we took very, we did not take lightly at all. I mean, when we were planning out all of this, of course, we looked at the strategic plan, but there's not a goal within that the board has established that's not aligned with the strategic plan. So as we're looking at the strategic plan and the individual goals of the school board, that's how our budget came about. And at the end of the day, as it relates to Norfolk Public Schools being able to provide high-quality educational experiences to all children, if we don't have teachers, we're not going to be able to accomplish anything. So our focus had to be on our personnel, recognizing them for the hard work that they do each and every day to serve our children, for those who are, have remained with us for a long time, and the ones that we are trying to attract here, because we have a significant teacher shortage. So at the end of the day, for me, the focus on teachers and building principals and staff, that's how we're going to be able to achieve all of these goals. Without people, we won't be there. We won't get there. So there's no way that these goals aren't aligned with what you've established for us to look at, or our existing strategic plan.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And my next comment was more of a comment suggestion. So I know we've talked about the reversion funds and the All-in-Virginia funds, which I know, like, the other grant funds that are, that are in here, but specifically around the unexpended funds. So really, I'm talking about the reversion and the PIR funds. So one, I have a question about, I want to back up and have a question about the PIR funds. So those were FY '21, unexpend, is, am I understanding that correctly?
So we were permitted, and Ms. Spivey, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we were permitted to carry those funds over because during the pandemic, as you recall, across the nation, across the state, there were a lot of unexpended funding because children weren't physically in schools. So there was a lot of unspent funding during that time, and because of that, we had been allowed to utilize it. And so we need to now for next school year to close our budget gaps.
Okay. So this was not funding that was available last year, for instance, or it was just released to us to use?
I'm not sure when it was released, but I know we need to use it next year.
Okay, okay. And so, so part of my, I guess, for my thought process, you know, I guess I'd like to decouple the reversion funds and the PIR funds out of the operating budget to really see, like, even from a sustainability standpoint, how we are mapping out the resources going forward. So this is just one thought I had, because it just, it kind of confused me a little bit. Maybe I just need to digest it more deeply, but it, I would just like to see that separated out a little better.
I can speak to that globally.
Okay.
So in order, and again, in looking at compensation and demonstrating to our staff that we value and appreciate them, all of our staff, one of the areas of priority for us was recruitment and retention. We've done a lot with recruitment, I believe, over the last several years. I believe that we could have done better with retention, which is why I am advocating for that $3,000 retention bonus. And as you know, as it relates to the city's revenue-sharing formula with the school division, we're not permitted at this time, as the policy exists, to utilize those funds for recurring costs. So the seven, I think it was 17.5 million, close enough that I am proposing that we utilize for that retention bonus through the use of reversion funds. So the vast majority of reversion, I am proposing to use for that and on, and other, other supplies, equipment, things of that nature that are one-time expenditures and not related to wages and salaries. And we were very intentional and purposeful about what we would like to utilize reversion funds for and other expenses that we know will carry on into the next school year.
Okay. Of course, I have, I have other comments, questions, but I will send that on via email.
And I'll send out something and how that process will look like going forward, because I don't want her to get all these questions and-
No, understood, yep.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so Dr. Gabriel?
Thank you. Dr. Birdsong and team, excellent job on the budget. Very excited to read all of the investments, as others have said before, in staff, in structure, in the extracurriculars. All of it is going to tremendously benefit our staff and our students. And as a parent in NPS, I'm very grateful for that. I have several questions also. I've sent a couple of them already through email, but just to highlight on two of them, our specialty programs do draw a lot of attention for families, for students, and I've had the benefit of touring several of them. How did you take into the account funding for our specialty programs, investing in them, building them, supporting them through staff and resources? If you could just share with us a little bit of how, how you did that.
So I need to remind the board that we had 16% of the budget for everything of importance to the school division. So while there were discussions about specialty programs, certainly our specialty programs are of great importance to us, there was one item, I do believe, that was requested that did not make it to this table, and that was the addition of, I believe, an administrator over the programs. And one of the reasons why, as we considered all other priorities, that a decision was made not to request an additional position just to supervise specialty programs is because, as you can recall, four years ago, I requested from the school division a chief schools officer position. This is a position that we've never had in the school division before. This position provides an additional layer of support for our specialty programs. Typically, those programs are assigned to the executive director of secondary schools. It's always been that way, even when I was the executive director of secondary schools. So with Dr. Kimsey, who happens to be in the position now, it is my expectation that she continue to provide supervision and support of that program or those programs. So we have increased support of specialty programs. Can we do more? I'm sure there are a lot of things that we can do, but again, at the end of the day, we have to decide as a whole school division, what are the most pressing needs, and how do we fund those for next school year? So if there are other needs, I'm just not aware of them. And of course, we want to grow them, and although it's not present in this budget, for example, there was the piece that we have discussed over the past couple of years about transportation, for example, related to the program at Blair Middle School. Well, that's already within the budget, that we didn't feel like there was anything additional that we needed to put forth in this presentation, but I just felt like it was an expectation expressed by the board. And so, and that's the direction that we plan to go for next school year, if that makes any sense.
It does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do, I do. So I appreciate how you said that, you know, being innovative is not just a word, it's an action, and we can't just use it as a one-time item. In your original presentation, there was some mention, as it was kind of discussed in our educational planning, about, you know, rightsizing the division. There was some pieces in there about revisiting career technical education and a comprehensive high school. Is there anything that you wanted to share with us, or is that still something that is in the making, or?
Well, I'm not sure how to answer that. Well, I'll answer that, Dr. Gabriel. The board will come together and have a conversation about CTE High School.
Okay.
Okay? That's why that, that slide was not in there.
Okay.
We'll come together as a board and discuss that.
Okay, thank you. Is that it?
That is it. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
I want to echo what's been said about the hard work and effort that's been put into putting this budget together. So I've, I'm deeper into the belief that student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change, and that the change starts with me. So I'm not interested at this point in time of doing as I may have done in the past and pick apart individual persons. What I am interested in, and what I really would like the board to have a conversation around as we develop our following questions, is, so we spent the earlier part of the day, and really we spent a year, two years, talking about these board goals and non-negotiables. And we know we're very early into the non-negotiables, but the board goals, the smart outcome goals, have been talked about for quite some time. So what I'm really interested in, not now, but at the next meeting and as we move towards whatever it is that the board's budget, proposed budget to council will be, is having a deeper understanding and to be more deeply convinced of the alignment of the budget to the board's goals, and the beginning of the process of honoring the board's non-negotiables. So as what Ms. Basine was asking earlier, and what often occurs in these discussions, I think is occurring again, is we'll talk about the strategic plan and how the board goals definitely align with the strategic plans, but we have elevated some things. And so if, if we know that, these are not exact numbers, but if 70% of our, at least according to the data, of our students are on free and reduced lunch, and if our data is showing us that 50% of our students who are economically disadvantaged, whatever their appropriate SES or qualify, are not reading on third grade level based upon our goals, what I want to hear is this budget that we submit, and as we have this conversation going forward, I want to hear it scream out. I appreciate the investment that's being made in instruction and the investment that's being made in staffing. I really want to get a real deep understanding of alignment of how this budget advances our board goals and honors our non-negotiables. That's it, and that it's aligned. And I think the more I'm convinced of that, and I think from a board's perspective, I think when we are convinced of that, we say, we say yay. So I'm not convinced of that yet, but it's not of any fault of what's been presented. We just haven't had a chance as a board to have that conversation. As, maybe as somewhat of an example of that, so in the non-negotiable, we talk about superintendent will not allow underperforming schools to have low teacher fill rates for prolonged periods, or make extensive use of substitutes, low-performing or provisionally licensed staff, without implementing a high-impact strategy. So if what Dr. Birdsong is, including the budget, is a high-impact strategy that addresses that, I just want to better understand how, how that aligns. And right now, I don't have enough information to do that. The only other, I guess, comment, it's not really a question at this point, when we're dealing with the, all the compensation pieces, teacher salaries or staff salaries, the steps, the reversion funds, what I think I'm understanding in the, in the budget, and we've done this for a while, is we are following a traditional budget process where we look at how many positions we have, we calculate how much that costs, we go about trying to fill those positions. If we don't fill those positions, we end up with a gap, we end up with reversions, we end up with unfilled positions in, around, around the district. And so it feels like to me that we are kind of calculating that again. And I'm interested in hearing more about whether or not there was any conversation around zero-based budgeting, where we really look at not just the positions that we have, but if we projected that we need 3,000 teachers, but we've only had 1,500, what does it look like based upon the, the actuals, and how does that impact everything else? So, you know, like, if we're talking about step increases, and if we do the step increases against the FTEs that we have, it looks one way. If we have an opportunity to look at it versus the staffing that we have and where they are, it may look a different way. So I just like to get a little better sense of the alignment of the resources towards the, towards how they impact the outcomes.
You want to address that a little bit?
I, I'd rather wait, because I like the, because really I want the, what I hope the board will avoid is just sending a list of 70 questions. I like the, what I'm really appealing to my board colleagues at this point around how do we come to some agreement or consensus around alignment with the priorities that we've set in the beginning of the non-negotiables. we've set in the beginning of the non-negotiables, and not get into the position of trying to pick here and pick there, because we could all do that. I think by doing that, we substitute our judgment for the superintendent, and we make accountability lessened. And so in my behavior change, I don't, I would like not to go down that path, and I'd like to see if I can get other board members to join me in that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jordan. Oh, thank you so much for standing there waiting for some questions.
No problem.
We appreciate you.
Yeah.
Thank you. We're going to wrap up. I will reach out to the board, how we will, and communicate with Dr. Birdsong, how we will move forward in this process, budget process, because our goal is to have our questions answered, have some dialogue, discussion, and get a budget approved, and get it across the street, right? So that's the goal. So look forward to one of my many emails to you all.
Before you adjourn, just for clarity on that, so as of right now, I know that there's, we were asked to set aside a March 1 date. Is it, is it, you're thinking that the first, the next opportunity for the board to really have our conversation around next steps related to the budget, is that that date is not next week? And we don't have any other date in between at this point, correct?
Well, next week, and I was going to share that as well, we're going to start at 3 o'clock with VAS coming in, in presentation on the HR study. And then I guess I'll, we'll go into closed session like we do, but it might be an opportunity, because I don't think we have anything pressing in closed session, and that's some feedback I could get from all of you, and if we can have a quick workshop after that presentation, that, I mean, that's something we can-
So we talked about doing, I guess we're going to get a written report-
Yes, that report will be written.
On the goal piece, but I guess I'm asking so that if we do do something next week, we can prepare for it. If we aren't going to do it next week, and it's really going to be centerpiece on March 1st, then at least we will know that, what we should, you know, what we'll do with that.
I would prefer March 1st, so we can really, again, have really, sit down and have a full discussion, and next week, let's just continue our agenda as planned, okay?
Thank you.
Ms. Basine?
Chair, so one other comment. So we kind of, under student success there, we covered a lot of ground, but we still have items that we did not cover. Is there a way that we can incorporate that somehow into either next week, or, you know, that we get that sooner than later?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I hear you.
All right, well, if there is none nor other business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.